May the merits of these teachings benefit all beings. May these words help and not harm. May they clarify and not confuse. May they self liberate, leaving no trace behind. All right. Hello, everyone. There is a story, I think it's from Zimbabwe, of a blind hunter who went out one afternoon with his brother in law, who was not blind. And together they were going to trap birds. And they went out with a couple of sacks and some traps. And they together went out into the woods. And as they were walking, the blind man who had been blind from birth and was very attuned to his surroundings could touch a plant or a tree as he was walking down the path and identify it. He would say to his brother in law, this is such and such a plant. And this is how you use it. These are its healing properties. And then they would hear the beats of wings. And the blind man would say, and that is such and such a bird. And this is their habitat, and this is what they eat. And as they kept walking, the blind man would say, in this terrain, I can taste, I can sense the humidity. So that means that a river is up ahead. And indeed, they would keep walking and they would come across a river. And the brother in law, who had not gone out hunting with his blind brother in law, realized how both attuned and wise this blind person was. And so he decided that afterwards, he would talk to him. He would ask him a little bit about life. They got to the place, after a couple of hours, they got to the place where they were going to set their traps. And they each went off in a corner apart from one another. So they couldn't really see each other, the one who was seeing. And they set down their traps. And they hid them well, you know, with some brush. And then together they left. And they went down river about another hour or so. And then it was hot. It was the early afternoon. And the blind man said, you know, why don't we stop here and rest for a while and maybe have some food? And so they had some lunch together. And then when it was time to check the traps, the two of them returned to where they had set them. And the seeing brother in law saw that in his trap, they could hear, as they were approaching, they could hear wing beats and they could hear some rustling. And so they realized they both had caught birds. And when the seeing man got to his trap, he saw that he had a small, very ordinary looking brown bird. And then when he, and he picked it up and he put it in his sack. And then when he went over to where the, his brother in law was blind, was taking his bird out. And this was this gorgeous bird with big plumage, all colors, like a rainbow. It was a very striking looking bird. And the blind man took it very carefully. He released it from the trap and he put it in his sack. And then the two of them put their sacks over their shoulders and headed home. And the whole time they were walking back, the seeing man was thinking, my wife would love that bird. Normally, they caught birds for food. But this one was so striking, it was so beautiful, that the seeing man thought, you know, she would just love to have it as a pet. And he decided that he would switch them. And so halfway home, they stopped, you know, by a stream and they were again taking a rest and they put the sacks down on the ground. And when the seeing man thought that the blind man was distracted, he took the sacks and he switched them. And they kept walking. They're carrying their sacks and they, they almost get home. And the blind man says, you know, I'm feeling a little bit tired. And I would like to just rest just a little bit more before we get home and we say hello to our wives and, you know, we show them the birds that we, that we trapped. And his seeing brother in law says, okay, you know, so let's stop here for a little bit. And so again, they take a seat. And the seeing man thinks, oh, you know, this would be a good opportunity for me to talk to him. And so he says to his brother in law, you know, I've been watching you. I've been paying attention the whole afternoon. And I see how connected you are. And I see how wise you are in the ways of the wild. And so I've been struggling with a question for a long time. And I wonder if perhaps you could help me with it. And the blind man says, sure. Tell me about it. And the seeing man says, why? Why do human beings have such a difficult time getting along? And the blind man is quiet for a while, to the point where the seeing man thinks that maybe he didn't hear the question. Or maybe he just doesn't want to answer. And when he's about to ask him again, the blind man nods and says, the reason human beings have so much conflict among themselves is because of what you just did to me. And the seeing man realizes, he knew. He knew what he'd done with the birds. And so very quietly, he takes the sacks again and he switches them. He returns the big colorful bird to the blind man. And then he says, well, how can we? How can we get along? And the blind man says, by doing exactly what you just did. And I was thinking of this story because I've been reading the news. And I've been reading about the Supreme Court. And I've been reading about the possibility of Roe versus Wade being overturned. And I was thinking of the ways of us, of human beings, and of the suffering we inflict on one another due to greed, anger, and ignorance, right, the three poisons. And I was thinking of all the ways in which we try to exert control, domination on one another, all the ways in which we are hungry for power. And then I was relating this to the reading that we were doing this week, what Uchiyama calls the problem of self and other. And the problem, as he saw, as he, as I understood at least, him expressing, is not actually a problem. Right? It's a way of seeing the world. And we know this. Right? We know this. But what I have said before, and certainly other teachers have said before, and what today, as I was reflecting on all this, struck me again, was the fact that this all boils down to one thought. What is that thought? That is not a, a, how do you say? That is not a rhetorical question. Thank you. And Elise is sitting here. What is the one thought that all of this conflict boils down to? Yes, Adam?
I'm here and the rest of you are out there.
Me?
Yeah.
Me. And again, we know this. And in fact, we've been studying this for some time now. But I wanted today, because much of the material covered in this chapter, and I in fact, you know, I meant to say, to ask you to read six and seven, because six was short. But I forgot. But because much of the material here, we have covered, I want to really think about this as, for each of us, to think about this, to really get in there and reflect on all the many ways in which, sure, we may not be after world domination or the domination of women's bodies or the domination of countries. But all the ways in which we, in a moment, elevate and put down, right? That is one of the precepts. Do not elevate the self and blame others. I believe is the ninth great precept. And so, so to reflect both the, and actually, and let me, let me clarify that a little bit, not just with others, but with the others in our minds, with the others in our own being. The moment in which some part of you begins to gain control over the rest of you. And when does that happen? At times when you, some part of you feels most vulnerable. You're in pain. You're tired. You're anxious. You're afraid. And watch the, I call him the, you know, the judge or the executioner, that then begins to pass sentence on all the other parts of you that are not quote unquote passing muster. All the parts of you that are not up to snuff in that particular moment in time, in that particular moment of your life. Right? So, so what happens out there, quote unquote, of course, always, always, always is happening here. And what is the antidote, I mean, Uchiyama essentially says, to drop the thought of self and other. But how? I mean, how do you actually do that? And that is not a rhetorical question either. How do you actually let go of a thought of self and other? Where everything in our biology is wired to protect me? Yes, Liz?
I like the quote, he says, when looking at another, their face is reflected in our eye. And so they are, they are part of us, you know. Not so easily done, but that resonated with me.
So when your daughter is being unreasonable, she gets angry. And she is having a little bit of a tantrum, let's say. In that moment, how do you see her reflected in your eye? How, how can you remember? Oh, that's true.
Through compassion, if you have it. Hopefully, you have it in that moment and you can see yourself in her.
So let me just press a little bit. So, so she's pushing, right? She's complaining, perhaps she's yelling at you. She's telling you all the ways in which you have ruined her life. Because that kids do to their parents, right? And in that moment, you're receiving that anger, right? You're receiving that conflict.
Yeah. By letting it be, by not being the target, by not being the bullseye. That's very hard to do. But if you can see the reaction and you can see your own reaction, then you can pause. You know? Not that, not that I always do, but to find that pause button, to have the presence of mind, really, that you see your own mind while you receive her mind. That's really, yeah.
Oh, I like that. You receive your mind as you receive her mind. I really like that. Yes, that's nicely said. Jitsuko.
Um, I just, I want to get this right. When you said what's happening in here is also what's happening out there. Um, what's happening out there is also happening within here. So are you saying, like, I can relate back to the daughter thing in a second, but I don't have to. But are you saying that this Supreme Court decision, that there's something inside of me, all of us, that is making that happen? Because that's when things get, the rubber hits the road with me and my daughter. Because if it's happening in her, it's also happening in me. And so I don't see how that, when that kind of enmeshment, I mean, it's nice if we're having a great day, but that sort of enmeshment is seems untenable. I mean, if you're like in the endures net and a cloud passes by, it's passing by everybody. And that sort of enmeshment is untenable. I mean, I'm not separated from her and her bad mood. That is my bad mood. That is, there's no, you know what I mean? I don't know how, we can't just spiral down into nihilism at that point. Because if we are, if there is no self and other, I don't, I don't really see how, like, we can stop the thing that's happening in the Supreme Court.
Yeah, well.
Or stop the bad mood.
Yeah. I mean, you said quite a bit there, so let me, let me see if I can hit a few points. One, yes, I am saying that what happens here happens out there and vice versa. You know, we speak about, you know, having responsibility, right? For what is, for the whole catastrophe, as my teacher used to say. Now, that doesn't mean that you are personally responsible in this moment for what Judge Alito wrote. What I mean is that the way that we understand ourselves in the world, the way that we generally view self and other, of course, affects every single action. And so what the Supreme Court is doing is simply a reflection of what happens in us all the time. It is a reflection of that separation, that elevation, that impulse, that need to say, this I need to control, this I need to contain, this I need to constrict. And remember how I've been speaking about, because I hear it so often still, the, I should be, dot, dot, dot. I should not be reacting this way after so many years of practice. My zazen should be quieter by now. I, to me, that, in that moment, that is your own, your personal Supreme Court passing sentence on you and the things that you think still need to be controlled. How do you stop what is happening? Well, I mean, you know, there's many levels to that, right? I mean, there's activism and there's, there's many levels to that, political lobbying and et cetera. But because of my, because I'm not a lobbyist and I'm not a politician and I'm not really, at this point, in any kind of direct sense of the word, an activist. Of course, I'm coming at this from the perspective of the Dharma. And so, so I want to highlight, I guess, both that enmeshment, as you called it. I think that's a good word because, because it is enmeshed when it's so difficult, right? It feels entangled. It feels like you can get caught in it as we do constantly. And so I feel that part of our work is beginning to disentangle ourselves at those moments when the net gets all tangled up. I mean, the net is the net. And it doesn't have to get tangled, but we do. Why? Because of greed, anger, and ignorance, because of delusion, because of wrong view. So part of what we're trying to do here is see more clearly. Go ahead.
But when I'm, like, when my daughter is having a thing and I'm right there with her, there is no separation between us. There's like, we're both pissed. Like, there is no separation. But like you're saying, like, this net, like, in order to, like, I have to start separate, like, it seems like it's, as you're saying, two different things, like, like, I'm right in it and, um, I can't just be like, oh, she's having a thing. Like, I'm having a thing with her, like, we're both having a thing. And like, I don't understand, like, how, like, when, like, you don't, when you don't separate yourself from the other. Um, I don't, I don't understand how you're, you're not going to stop it. Like, eventually I have to be like, you're having this thing and I am not going to be doing that thing with you anymore because we're just spiraling down. I don't understand, like, it seems like in order to, and it seems like you do have to untangle to solve a problem.
Yes, I would, I would say so. Remember, to see the absolute is not yet enlightenment. You can't just live in unity. You can't. And it's, I mean, it's not realistic. It's not what the world is. And so there is understanding, in the moment where your daughter is having a tantrum. It's even in a moment, as Uchiyama says, and as I've said many, many times, it takes an instant. It's not years of practice. It's an instant in which you feel what she's feeling. It's an instant in which you are your daughter having a tantrum. And you understand at a cellular level what is going on with her. And if you can really do that, then in the next moment, your mom, again, you're not Delilah, and you can say, oh, this is what you need. And if you're able, you give it to her. Unity, I don't want to use the word separation, unity, differentiation. It can't just be one thing. Brian?
I often raise my hand and then I get so caught up in the conversation that happens before it's my turn to speak, that I lose my train of thought. So bear, if you can bear with me for a moment, I might fumble through this a little bit. What was interesting to me about the story you told of the two men hunting together was that the blind brother in law, after, after the, after he revealed that he knew that the bags had been switched, he, his response wasn't, wasn't about, about how do we live together better as human beings? His response wasn't, you don't do what you just did. His response, in terms of things being better, his response was, you do do what you just did in terms of righting, righting the wrong. So he didn't chastise the brother in law for doing something wrong. He praised in a way the brother in law for doing the right thing once it was, once, when he had the opportunity to. And, and sometimes I think, you know, it's so hard. I mean, I don't want to say that because it's not true that it's hard to see, see the unity, because I think we do it all the time. We do it, number one, we do it when, all the time when we don't know we're doing it. And I think, you know, the more, the longer we practice and become more mindful and present, the more we start to catch glimpses of that. And number two, we do it all the time when things are joyful. We feel that connection when things are joyful. You know, when, when my son, when we're having joyful moments, I felt completely connected. When he's throwing a tantrum, I felt different. So we're doing it all the time. It's the, those challenging times when we lose, when we lose sight of it because, you know, some, because we really start to cling to ourselves. And so, you know, so for example, this, this week, I've been having a few challenging days with my partner, who's been, who she's been having some days for her that have been a little bit more difficult in how she's feeling. And I've been having some days that have had a lot of intensity in terms of what I feel like I need to get done. And so we just have been in sort of different spaces, which means often when we come together, you know, there's this bit of a collision. And we're not, you know, sometimes you, sometimes, you know, you run into a situation that really needs a thoughtful, we need to sit down, we need to talk about this. But I often think when, well, whether it's that serious or not, I think often the way to create the unity and to act on the unity is to, is to work on what are the next steps to take together. So connecting it to the brothers, you know, what happens now? Yeah, we just collided. What happens now? What do we do now? And I know that it often works for Amy and I, you know, when we have a little conflict that doesn't need a big discussion. It's like, oh, how do we move forward from here? You know, and I think that applies too to big issues in our world like, like the abortion issue and the Supreme Court issue that we're seeing right now. It's, it's not working the way we're doing it, acting as separate groups with, and holding so tightly to our opinions and the only way forward is ours. And it's never going to. So if we don't get together as different groups and say, how do we move forward from here together? We're just, we'll just keep, we'll just keep going all over the place with our issues. So I thought, I thought of that, that kind of next steps came to me.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, and that's what I have said often, right? When we speak of the precepts. I mean, at some point you'll break them because that's just what happens. And it's always, what happens next? You know, what, what, what do you do next? When you, when you notice, you got angry, you did elevate yourself, you lied, you, whatever it is that you did, you know, what happens next? And what you said, I think, is very nice. And actually pertains to the precepts as well, that, that this, that this blind man was highlighting the affirmative action, if you will, as opposed to, as you said, you know, the punishment or even the corrective measure. He was, he was seeing. In a sense, he was empath, not empathizing in the sense of that it's okay what you just did. But he saw, because I think, when I hear him say, the reason we have conflict is because of what you just did. I hear him say, I understand. I see what you did and I see why. And this is why we have the world that we have. Now, you, you make amends. This is how we make amends in the world as well. I wanted to bring in, you know, the short quote from the Faith Mind Sutra, which says, "In the world of suchness, there is neither self nor other than self. To come directly into harmony with this reality, just simply say, when doubt arises, not to." You know, I remember the first time I read this, I was like, come on. Really? Like, that's enough? I would just say to myself, not to? But he's saying, "In the world of suchness, there is neither self nor other than self." This is a refrain in the Sutras and the Koans, neither existence nor nonexistence. Well, then what is it? What is this that is happening right now? To come directly into this reality, he says, when doubt arises, just simply say, not to. Try that. Next time you have a conflict with someone or you have a conflict with another part of yourself, not to, and see what happens. Elliot?
So it's hard for us to have clarity about our lack of clarity. And around Easter time, I was walking down the street. I don't think I shared this with the group, but there was, there was like this sign, it was just letters written out that said, Happy Easter. And I was really sad. I was going through a ton of stuff at the time. And I was inclined to see it as like this really depressing thing, like, there's this Happy Easter sign, but the world is in such chaos. And then I was like, if I was happy right now, if I was on cloud nine, I would just say, wow, that's just a really innocent expression of joy and just kept walking. And in the midst of, of whether it's a dream or whether it's lack of clarity, at best we could realize, I'm not clear right now, or this is kind of dreamlike. But we don't usually have the capacity to be like, not only am I erroneously perceiving this situation, this is how I perceive it, right? But we really do have to, even right before you said, I was thinking, we have to, like how they say in the Sutras, you have to live beyond the contention of right and wrong, of gain and loss, of... the contention of right and wrong, of gain and loss, of good and bad. Because it's obvious when other people are like so getting it wrong, when someone's either despairing how they're such a bad person, and you could see it's because they've gone through so much trauma, and people have planted that seed in their mind, or someone's self-righteous about taking away abortion rights, whatever the issue is, like, easy to see erroneous perceptions in others. And it's hard to see erroneous perceptions in ourselves, whether it's like erroneous righteous perceptions, or erroneous self-degrading perceptions. And just, we just have to take root in that we don't really have that clear picture most of the time, if ever. That's hard.
Yeah, but I think it's, I think that's exactly where you start, right? Let, let me not assume that what I see is all there is. That's an excellent place to start. Pretty much assume the opposite, that you're only seeing one bit of it. Because if you can start with that, then at least you're open to the possibility that there might be other ways of seeing, or there might be more to see. And you know how in a dream, and I forget what the rules are, but I think one of the rules is that you can't turn on the light, you can't turn a light on and off. And when you realize that, you realize you're in a dream. And I think there's something else. You can train yourself. You can train yourself to sense, ah, there's something here I'm not seeing. I, I don't know that I did that deliberately, except I remember the first few times when I, I felt, I had a failed sense of it in my body. This, it's a little bit like a, like a dissonance, like there's something not quite right. And I can't tell what it is, because that's part of the definition, right, of delusion or of ignorance, but something in me is unsettled. And so I've learned to trust that signal. It's like, oh, slow down, first of all. You're probably, you're, you're not seeing the whole thing. And really go, go in, you know, really tap in to what is happening in your body, and then what is happening as you relate to the world. Because what I have found is that when you can't see, but if you're open to it, the world will show you, and others will show you. I mean, we're constantly reflecting each other in each other's eyes, as Liz was, was quoting. But you have to be willing to, to, to see that. You know, one who is self-righteous, one who knows, will not see that. The signals are there, but they will not receive them. Jess.
I also have the problem that Brian described, where like, I get very interested in what other people are talking about, and forget what I was gonna say. But I think it was something like, you know, I, I was listening to to a talk that Shugen Roshi gave a few days ago. And then fortunately or unfortunately, had opportunity to put it to immediate use that night. My partner and I were having a disagreement about something totally mundane, like housework or something. And the talk that Shugen Roshi gave was about a lot of things, so I won't go into all of it. But he said one thing that really helped me, which I think is a, is another way of phrasing not to. And he said, "Do you want to be right, or do you want to be free?"
That is my line. That is my line. I can't believe it. Well, actually, that's great. I, I quote him all the time.
I choose, as you say, I'm just saying, he incites you. So, um, and in that argument that we were having later that night, I had so much anger that was coming up, and I was just sitting there like quietly seething, doing all of my like nonviolent listening, or whatever that I was supposed to be doing. And I just said to myself, do you want to be right, or do you want to be free? And I realized that, and then I said to myself, and then I was like, okay, what does that mean in this moment? And it's like anger in this moment is corrosive. It's not, this is not a force for liberation in this moment. And I was like, just like, free yourself of anger. I had to just keep saying it, like, it didn't just all poof, go away. But it did lead to a different, to responding from a different place. And, you know, I, I spent a year when I was training in graduate school, training on a surgical abortion unit in Manhattan. And, you know, it was Planned Parenthood, there are all those people who like periodically staged their protests across the street and stand there with crosses and all of this stuff. And I used to go home and just like imagine all the ways I was gonna tell them off. I never did. You're really not supposed to do that. And, and yesterday, or the day, whatever it was, the day before, when I read the news, I was like, do you want to be right, or do you want to be free? Like, what, what is the response that a desire for liberation, or you could even say, like, you want to be right, or do you want everybody to be free? What response does that ask for, instead of rage, which I think is how I would typically respond? And, and a very different thing came up for me. So I, I do think that there's still more in myself, there's more work deeper than that to get to not to. But to me, that feels like some, like downward escalator into not to, that I find actionable.
Yeah. And I think, you know, the important point here to, to emphasize is that you can't have both. You can't be right and be free. And, and really take that in for a moment. It doesn't mean that you don't have beliefs, that you don't have opinions, that you don't take action when action needs to be taken. You can't be right and be free. They're, they're mutually exclusive. And this is not the right of skillful, right, of, of right action, you know, of the, of the path. This is right as in right and wrong. Nina, hold on one second. Let me just read what Alexandra was saying. "For me, my motive within, for good or bad, relates to the ugliness in life, regardless of what I'd like my motive to be based on the person I think I ought to be, I ought to be. It's honesty of motives that helps me have less separateness." Yes. But can you, can you say a little bit about that, the ugliness in life? Where is that? Oh, yeah, there you are.
I'll try. I mean, I'll physically try. So if I really look at my motive, and I'm not just talking about motive to do this or that, it's, it's my, my motive inside is one of selfishness or self-serving in some way, even if it's in a way where, you know, oh, you know, my, I think my motive is to help all these people, when in fact, it's, it's because if everybody sees me helping them, then I will look better. And that's a false motive. You know, and so recognizing that I have all these false motives helps me identify that perhaps the ugliness of other, what other people are doing, you know, is based in a, in that kind of thing that they're unaware of. And so for years, I was unaware of that. And so it, it kind of humbles me a little bit. And I'm less apt to be like, these are horrible, horrible people. Because if I do that, then I'm saying that I'm a horrible, horrible person. So is that kind of?
Yeah. And I think, I think what's sometimes difficult to, to really grok and, and accept is that even in the most heinous acts, some part of us is looking for that, for fulfillment, is looking to, to endure, is, is doing what the self is built to do, is just doing it in a, in a, it's skillful, perhaps even twisted way. And sometimes that's difficult to, to bear, because then it seems like the, the dark side of that would be that we would justify or somehow a, a, accept as, as in, well, justify really is the right word, justify actions that are, that are harmful, sometimes horrifically so. And that's not certainly what Buddhism is saying. It's, it's just, as I've said before, there's a logic to our actions, even when they seem most illogical. We're trying to survive. We're trying to endure. And sometimes we just are very badly equipped to do so, or there's circumstances in which we come into being, right, in which we grow up, in which we're raised, are such that it, it's just not accessible to us. You know, the, the, the goodness, if you will, of life as opposed to that ugliness, you know, we, we can't get to that acknowledgement, the recognition that we are perfect and complete. And so it's not, that's, that's why, you know, we stress so often the, the incredible gift and opportunity that it is to be able to practice the Dharma, to have the circumstances be such that you can do that, right? You're not, at this moment, in a war-torn country. You're not struggling to find food and shelter. You have enough resources, financial resources, to take time to, to do this for two hours on an evening. That is not nothing by, by any means. And so that is the, the, the part where I do feel that as practitioners, we have a responsibility. I always say to someone in a conflict between two people, if you're, if you're a practitioner, in one sense, you have more responsibility, not because the other person is not responsible for their actions, but because you have more tools. You have access to a way of doing things differently that the other person may not yet. And that does not mean go and teach them. That does not mean, you know, read them the Dharma or try to teach them. It just means, in my mind, get deep within yourself and pool from those resources, because you can offer them in a way that somebody else may not be able to yet. So I do feel that, that that's a responsibility that we have, you know, it's not just about, you know, sitting still and feeling better. Nina.
I think Kami might have been before me. I'm not sure. If you want to go ahead, Kami.
Either one.
So, sorry, I'm sitting here in the literal dark in my car and coming back from teaching. And it's strange, because at the beginning, as I was listening, I got caught up with Jitsuko's, you know, mother, that feeling of that very primal feeling one has when one's child, one's child is distraught. And it's just, it is like this utter feeling of an inability to separate. And I've been working on that in a very visceral way for the last two years with my nineteen-year-old son, who's been really struggling and has been trying to separate from me, which is a normal thing for children to do, right? To be, to be different, to be connected, but different than their parents. So there, there's so much that resonates. But by the end, after listening to you all, I felt this sort of calm and gratitude for everything everyone has shared. And so I say, thank you for the, the parable. And something just sort of so many things have come to me, but listening to, to you all, but one is that, as you said, sep- separation, no separation is not the same as no difference.
Yes.
It's a delusion. Right? So, and what comes to mind, it's funny, is, is, is race, right? Race, we know, is a fiction. We know it's a construct. We know that we are one species. There's no human subspecies. And yet those who say, oh, I don't see color, you know, if you're white, and you say, I, I don't see color, I see, everybody's equal, I see it. It's, it's a delusion. And it, I don't know, I know, as I say, you listen to podcasts on being, but there's a wonderful conversation between Krista Tippett, and who's the host, and the poet, African-American poet, and professor Claudia Rankin. And the title of the, the podcast is, for this episode, is, "How do I say this so that we can stay in the same car together?" And it's about Claudia Rankin's, as a black woman, her conversations with white people. And she recounts one incident where she's on a plane. And, you know, she's a professor at Yale, she's famous, she's from the National Book, you know, she's just at the top. And this man, white guy, sits down next to her on the plane, and, and they start talking, and they somehow have this chemistry, and they're just, suddenly they're singing the, the Commodores, you know, the night train, and they're, they're like singing, and they're, they're connecting chemistry. And then at the end of this flight, he says something like, this has been great, you know, and I, I just don't see color. And she says, wait, don't say that. And he, he, he says, oh, and she says, because if you say that, that means you don't see me. And he says, and this is kind of to Brian's point, and to the moving through it. She says, it's okay, it's okay. This is why we're having these conversations. And he said, did I say anything else? And she said, no. And then they went back, and they said goodbye. And, you know, it, it was this encounter, but it just struck me as, oh, you know, there is no separation between us, all of us, but but I'm different, you know, my child, you know, my son Ben says, I love you, Mom, I've been really close to you, but I'm different. And I need you to see that difference. Um, and then finally, and I'll, then I'll stop. I drive to teach through three different counties in northern New Jersey. And one of them is white supremacist. It's Hunterdon County, they had KKK. It's, so when I drove through there at the height of the pandemic, and we were wearing masks on campus still, there were big signs that said, huge signs that said, Trump. And then underneath it said, my body, my choice. And it was about masks. And I thought, oh, my God. It's delusion. It's like the blind man in the, it's, it's like the brother-in-law, the, the seeing brother-in-law, thinking it just in this delusion that the blind man can't see on some level, that, that I, I know that's not a clear connection, but I guess I'm talking about delusion, that the person who put up that sign cannot does not understand that that is a, an appropriation of a slogan by women, by pro-choice women. But they come to the understanding because their body has suddenly been threatened, because they don't want to wear a mask. And it's just that sort of
But you're pointing out
When I thought, that is pure delusion, is not knowing what you don't know.
Right.
Anyway.
You're highlighting exactly why we practice for so long. Because you can turn anything into the self. I mean, it reminds me, that example reminds me of Senator Cruz saying to Katanji Jackson-Brown that the anti-racism, that, that the words that, that Martin Luther King, how, how was it? I wrote about this, that, that some of the, the, the Martin Luther King quotes could be, in fact, understood as being racist, that, that the way that they were being used was a way that showed that it was, it was not what he intended, that, that they were actually racist. I mean, turn, talk about, you know, turning something into self and, and appropriating. Appropriating, I think it's a, in fact, I don't know who it was, but there's a teacher who said something like, believing in the self is a misappropriation of public property. And, and remembers like that example of the storehouse consciousness that turns, a part of it turns, looks at itself and falls in love, right? The myth of narcissism. And that becomes the I. And you can turn anything into I that is convenient. And that is why that, that quote that Shugen used, would you rather be right or be free? I think is, is apt, because the, the, whenever you choose that right I think is apt because the, whenever you choose that rightness, you choose, I was going to say sovereignty, but that's not the right word. I mean, whenever you choose the self, essentially, whenever you choose the self, liberation doesn't stand a chance. You can't ignore the self, right? You can't erase the self. You can't whitewash the self. But when you choose it as a thing that stands on its own, liberation has no chance, has no room. Camille.
I have two questions. One, I think, is quick, which is, "You can't be wrong and be free either, then, right?"
Yes, correct. Why am I saying yes and shaking my head? You are correct. You cannot be wrong and be free either.
Okay. And then I'm curious about this inner Supreme Court that wants to control. Or one teacher I love says, it's, she says, "Stop trying to be the traffic controller of the universe." And...
The thing is, it's less benign than that. I mean, it really is like a, like a judge and executioner. It's not just traffic control. It is, I mean, the things we say to ourselves sometimes, you wouldn't say them to somebody else. Sorry, I interrupted you, but it's, it's more than just traffic control. I mean, it really is a sentencing, I think.
Yeah, yeah, it is. So, um, I've been doing this goofy thing just recently. Or maybe it's goofy or maybe it's skillful, but it's related to this, which is that when I'm sitting, there's so much like inner Supreme Court, like this controlling, like sometimes vicious, but sometimes, hmm, well, you know how it is. And I'll try and do something constructive, like Jessica was talking about. And, okay, I'm so angry. I'm gonna deal with this in a constructive way as I'm sitting. But then it turns into like, like a, like a derpy angry kind of thing that also is violent in itself, trying to not be angry. So now, after sitting, I'll just like put a blanket on the floor and lay down. Like now I can have all the feelings that I couldn't have when I was sitting. I'm just gonna lay here and I'm gonna be totally furious and totally sad and all these feelings that I was trying to manage as I was sitting. Now I can lay here on my blanket and have them for 20 minutes. You know, it's like a separate, it's like I created this new space other than sitting that where the Supreme Court is not, like, doesn't, doesn't exist as much. And I'm, I guess I'm wondering, like, how are we supposed to, or not supposed to, because that's already the Supreme Court, but how, um... Like, I'd love to sit and have this beautifully constructive relationship with anger that Jessica described. Um, and, um, I think it's, it's probably pretty, I don't think this is specifically Camille's problem. I think this is probably a very relatable problem that I'm not doing a good job kind of putting my exact finger on, but, um...
Well, I think if I know what you're saying, it actually segues very well into what I wanted to say in terms of kind of wrapping this up. How to deal with that Supreme Court? You have to be willing to be infinitely gentle and to keep finding ways to do that. And for you specifically, I would say, to pull down that barrier between zazen and everything else. You know how to sit with discipline and rigor and concentration. And I think the work, you know, for you is how to sit as a complete open hand, complete open heart. And so if you dissolve into tears halfway through zazen, let yourself. You don't have to wait until after when you're lying on your blanket. You can do it in the middle of zazen to gentle yourself into the center of your life. Frankly, I think it's the only way that we will ever transcend this, you know, if we're able to as a, you know, as a species, that what is required is, most of you have already been saying, is we, as long as we're on one side and another, that will never work. We will just swing from one side to the other. And so, so all the spiritual teachers through the years, you know, even those, you know, that do speak of rage, you know, in the face of so much, so much that is, that is unconscionable. You know, that, that rage arises, I think is not, I mean, I think it's, it's natural in some ways. But again, what do you do with it? Because, so that it will not consume you and everything on your path, you know? So, so how do you take that energy and, and use it in a way that is life-affirming? I really feel that the vehicle, the fulcrum of that energy needs to be completely soft, completely open, completely yielding. I don't know if I'm, if I'm saying that in a way that is, that is clear, but we can't have clean, straight lines. We can't have boundaries. We can't have beginning of the period and end of the period.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think maybe what I was trying to say was, when the Supreme Court is there, it's so violent. But then trying to make the Supreme Court go away also is violent. And so...
So you welcome them in. Pema Chodron says, you know, "You, you welcome in your demons and you serve them tea." And whenever I would read that, I would kind of roll my eyes a little bit. And I was like, "Yes, exactly." I mean, whatever language you want to use, you know, to make friends with it, that you welcome them in. You have to, somebody said, I think Liz, "Make room." You have to give them space. What, what creates that conflict is the constriction. The moment you say, "All of it is allowed in this space," you know, that Enzo contains the whole thing, the Supreme Court and the jury and the guards and the victim and the defender. I mean, when everybody is there and you give them a lot of room, and at a certain point you realize, "Oh, they're starting to..." I mean, I wrote about this. "Oh, they're starting to kind of talk to one another." "Oh, they're, they're starting to relate." So instead of being on two sides, now you're both on the same side and you're relating to one another. Daddo would speak about this and people would think that he was naive, you know, that for any conflict, Israeli-Palestine, for example, that's been going on forever, he would say, "They need to sit down and talk." I mean, every teacher has been saying that. And it seems like, "Oh, come on. That is so naive. That's not gonna happen." Well, what we've been doing so far hasn't worked. It's the only thing that's going to happen. We have to be willing to make room for all of it. So, and stop fighting. And so, so returning it to the internal Supreme Court, it, "Stop fighting." Stop fighting, Camille. All of that energy could be used for liberation. You don't need to fight. Your zazen, as Uchiyama says, is already Bada. It's already a pure land. It's already infinite light, immeasurable life. You don't have to fight. Okay, Jitsuko, but is it quick?
I gotta tell Nina to take her, take your, my body, my choice to the white supremacist neighborhood and write an article in their paper. So they see that they're no different. I mean, if it dawned on me when you said that, they gotta see that. So you gotta, how are you gonna let people know, "I'm gonna take it someplace"? But you're driving through that community. So I want to encourage you to publish that.
I wasn't going to cut you off, but since it does, yes. Jitsuko, was that quick, what you had?
I mean, I guess maybe we could go back to this sometime. But, I mean, Yukiyama, Yukiyama also says, um, he also says, "But that's not zazen. That's chasing thoughts." So, like letting the Supreme Court talk. I mean, I get Camille, like, being like, you know, "I'm doing zazen now and now I'm gonna go lay down and do this other thing." Because zazen, okay, well, anyhow, I just...
I did it. I did it. It doesn't work. It doesn't work. Do not compartmentalize. Do not cordon off.
But there is that part in the book where he does say that. He says, "Thinking is not, that thinking is thinking. A zazen is a zazen." And so it's, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time.
I'm not talking about thinking. And I think that is part of, you know, is Japanese culture coming in. I mean, people would, would come to the monastery and say, "I never talked to my teacher about personal stuff." He's like, "But it's all personal. It's all personal." So here is the part where, yes, you know, Uchiyama, with all due respect, I mean, I think, I think we have seen some things, you know, about what works and what doesn't work. And so I would say that you have to bring all of it to your cushion. Or you don't have to bring it. It's already there. I would say, allow all of it to be there. And keep looking for ways to give yourself permission, because nobody else is going to give it to you, to give yourself permission to actually be with all of it. You know, I have had periods, and I used to think this was cheesy, but I have had periods where I've just sat here with hands over my heart because I needed that softening. And the part of me that says that, that thinks, "Oh, that was cheesy," that's the Supreme Court. And that's the part that is actually afraid of something, you know? So, so if I actually want to be liberated, I have to be able to be with everything that is there. I mean, Uchiyama says, how many times has he said, "Zazen is the self living life as itself," right? Something like that. Well, you can't, you, you don't, you know, cordon off your life during this hour, this half an hour, 20 minutes, however long it is, and then you continue off when you get off the cushion. I mean, that doesn't work. It doesn't work either. So please just let it all in. And since you're sitting at home, I mean, it's not like you have to worry about it. Cry if you need to. Get up if you need to. Ball if you need to. Tear your hair if you need to. Actually give yourself permission to feel. And then what happens if you do that is, you know, things kind of quiet down.